All right, we are live back with another the writer's block live. Uh, we are live on Facebook, YouTube and Twitter of all places. Um, I should really start streaming this to my Instagram, but we're those, those are the three that we're live on right now. Uh, tonight from uh, the studio here at film dog media appreciate Mark Ward and film dog media letting us come in and, and use this place for these lives, but tonight uh, we are here with trustful city council elect for now for another, not even a week. Uh, Ben Horton. So Ben, thank you for being here.
Hey, it's good to be here. I appreciate you. Thanks for having me. It's an, it's an honor and uh, it's an honor to be elected to the city council.
Yeah. Are you ready for uh swearing in on November the third?
I cannot wait. We are, I keep telling people this, it, I, I'm very excited. I know there's a lot, there's a, there's a lot we, we have to learn. And there's a lot to do right out the gate. I mean, I, I feel like this is, it's almost like the Kentucky Derby and you got a bunch of stallions just sitting in the stall and we're, we're rocking the stalls just open.
Yeah.
Open the gate. I know that when they release us though, here's, here's, here's the caveat.
Yeah.
Why I think the Kentucky Derby is a good analogy.
It is.
When they, when they open that gate and we take off, I know that there's going to be a jockey sitting on our back, pulling the reins a little bit saying, all right, slow down, pace yourself, pace yourself. But when we get to that last lap, I'm uh, it's going to be remarkable.
Yeah. If you were a Kentucky Derby racehorse, what would your name be?
Oh goodness gracious.
Are you a sea biscuit? What are you? That was just too good of an analogy. It really was.
Uh, my spirit animal is a jaguar, so keep calling me jaguar.
I've wondered about that because I've seen that in one of your social handles and I've wondered where the Jaguar comes from. So that's fantastic. Uh, well, before we really dive in, I just want to give you a quick uh ad read here. You can see it on the ticker. Uh, wherever you're watching this, this live show tonight, but uh, 360 lending Lisa McClellan, uh, navigating paths to homeownership, visit my three sixty lending.com. Appreciate Lisa uh, for sponsoring these live shows. She's been in trustful for more than 20 years, opened 360 lending in 2022. So thank you, Lisa. And also the Mark Turner Law Firm, appreciate Mark Turner. Uh, just sponsoring this live show, visit mark turner law firm.com or call two zero five, five, six, eight, seven, zero, zero, three. You'll see that running across the ticker at times tonight. It's there right now. Uh, we'll switch some things on that ticker throughout. You'll see some upcoming trustful uh, just different committee meetings, council meetings. And then I've also added a new ticker uh, for text my gov, so that if you're not signed up for that, you need to be. Um, me and Mayor Choate were in the middle of a live last week when he was uh, he announced the, the closing of Carrington's entrance for Norfolk Southern, and I got that text literally while we're in the live. So I said, I'm going to throw that text my gov stuff up uh, in the, in the ticker on here. So now it's there, just text trustful to nine, one, eight, nine, six to subscribe. And that's all you gotta do. So all right, that's it for ad reads for now.
Well, I'll follow up on that. I highly recommend signing up for that text my gov if you haven't done that. I, I put it on my phone and it's uh, you know, sometimes I get alerts on that before I even get notified as a elect city council. So that's, it's, it's a, it's a good program to have.
It is, it is. Well, let's talk about now, now council is finally about to be real for you guys. Uh, what uh, what, what liaison assignments were you, have you been tasked with?
Yeah, Ben uh, Ben consulted with us on that first. That was uh, that was a nice cordial gesture. Thank you, Ben. Mayor short for that. I like mayor short. Uh, but my assignments are uh, public safety. Um, tree commission, design review and trustful utilities.
A good mix of some different stuff and some, some pretty big stuff, it seems like.
It is, it is. Trustful Utilities is a very important strategic partner to the city uh, with Mike Street, Strech's leadership there. Uh, so that's very important. Design review is very important. All the the subdivisions and buildings and signs and anything going into the city uh, needs to be approved. And so it goes through design review for that. And then obviously public safety, I would say that that is, that is one of the top dogs in the city. If we don't have a safe city, then we don't have a safe.
What have you learned at least leading up to, to, to being sworn in like for those liaison uh, assignments, like is it just going to each of their meetings and just uh, be, being an open ear? What, what, what is it that you have to kind of do?
I, I would say um, well, what have I learned or what do I think the role is?
Both. What have you learned and what have you learned that the role is?
I think it's multifaceted. Um, the role, you know, obviously is, is we're gonna need, we, we have to have good communication is the point. It is what I was about to dive into. The, I don't want to waste too much time on it, but I think it's very important for liaisons to go to the meeting, not just get a report.
Yeah.
From uh, the people on the boards or the committees. I think going into the meeting, having the conversations, being involved in the situation. For example, the tree commission. I've, I've been to a couple of meetings now to the tree commission. And I didn't realize how in-depth some of our, our tree commission stuff is and, and how uh, how important the, the tree ordinance is and all that work.
It's a pretty big little handbook on its own, isn't it?
Yeah. Well, and I like it. I, I do like the, the idea of preserving the canopy as much as possible.
Yeah.
In trustful. So as things like that of going to the meetings, you know, figuring out what's, do we have a tree mitigation plan? Are there issues? What's legal liability? How does that, how does that overlap with the county right away? Versus copper project right away versus the city right away.
Yeah.
What's the legal precedence there? What's the hierarchy? Who's in charge of it? When do we cut in? So there's a lot to it.
Yeah.
Um, and I haven't even started yet.
Yeah.
So, so I can't imagine the complexity uh, of the systems I'm about to learn with trustful utilities, public safety, and then design review as well.
Yeah. What have, over these last two months since the election was August 26th? Uh, so just over two months ago, what, what's it been like? That, what have the differences been being just a, a candidate versus council elect? What, did things ramp up for you? How have you spent your time? How often is your phone ringing? You know?
Oh gosh, my phone is ringing nonstop now. Um, and I don't mind it actually.
Part of the job.
Because I'm, I'm learning faster. I'm learning harder and I'm learning from all the sources.
Sure.
From the people who've been here for 30 and 40 years running the city, but I'm also learning from new residents who just moved in. And what they, what they want, what they want to see, what their feeling of trustful is. What they're, you know, and it's, it kind of gives you a sense with me being a native trustful born resident.
Yeah.
I can kind of see, you know, I know when they're, I, I remember what it looked like when there was just one red light and a little bit of traffic all the way up until now. But learning what a new resident thinks is also very important because they didn't grow up with that. So they didn't grow up with some of these preconceived notions and, and uh, and ideas of about what they, what they think trust fill is and who we are. So it's really interesting learning all that and then homing in on, on what I think we should be.
Yeah. What do you think you've spent the most time doing these last two months like in terms of preparation?
Economic development planning and discovering funding sources.
Hmm.
That is what I've been spending my time on.
How do you spend your time?
That is, that is the one thing that I've been gravitating to.
Okay.
Just first off, because I like it. I, I love economic development and all the complexities that come along with it. I like the, the promise that it can give our city.
Sure.
It excites me. That's my, my company. That's what I'm good at. I am good at taking a non tangible, taking something from conceptual to a tangible reality.
Yeah.
It is my favorite thing to do. It gets my blood pumping. That's why I get up in the morning. So being able to do that and provide that for our city excites me.
I bet. I bet. How many meetings do you think you've gone to? Where, where, where all have you gone over these last two months?
Uh, well officially.
Officially.
Officially, we've, we've met a couple of times. We just had our workshop for our city council that we're about to go through, but
Right.
Uh, the mayor, the mayor elect and all the city councillor elects and Jamie Anderson went to the Alabama league of municipalities. We, we went through training there and uh, did a bunch, a bunch of uh, ethics training and um, but one of the things I really love doing that, two things, I like the, the camaraderie. We kind of, we kind of uh, it's kind of a team building exercise going there. Um, and, and all of us, you know, hanging out and talking to each other and learning, learning more about each other and how each other work. Um, but then on top of that, the networking at the Alabama league municipalities was fantastic. The information was fantastic. And it, it really is a benefit for our city, for the mayors and the city council to be involved in that and to get uh, trained on that early.
Yeah. Where, where, where was it this year? The, the?
Tuscaloosa.
It was in Tuscaloosa. Okay. Good place to have it. Good place to have it.
For you.
Okay. I just walked right into it. I really did. Really walked right into that. Um, something I've been asking everybody, what, what are you looking forward to the most uh, serving on the city council?
Hmm. That is, I think our answer is, so it kind of.
Is it the economic development?
It is the, it is the, it's, it's my triple threat. It's imagine, design, build. I love imagining, designing that and then building. And it's not that simple. There's a lot of collaboration, diversity of thought needs to be included in that. Um, the city involvement is very, very important for that. If we're building a city, obviously you want to include the residents and citizens. You know, you can't just come up with an idea and try to throw it in a corner somewhere in the city.
Won't work. Yeah.
Uh, so that is, that's probably my number one thing I'm excited about.
Okay. What are you looking forward to the least?
The, I would say.
Be honest.
Okay, I'll be honest. Uh, I would say the misconceptions of the public on how things work and the misinformation and the assumptions and the speculation that occurs because of it. Um, and then the social media backlash that, that can just happen right away before any known information is out of reform. Effects occur.
Sure.
So mitigating that, I'm not looking forward to that. Um, however, I do believe that that is important.
Yeah.
And um,
Well, and I think, and if I can interject, I, I think this particular group will probably be uh, more aware of that and probably better at that than any previous administration. That, that's not just this past one. It's, I mean, th- this group is probably the youngest group that's, that's ever been elected collectively. Uh, I know Ben is the, is the youngest elected mayor because I looked through a lot of obits and I figured it out. But uh, I, I think this group will be much more savvy in that way. And I think communication has kind of been at y'all's collective forefront since you've been elected. So like, I, I just, I think y'all will probably do a pretty good job at that.
Well, I'd say it's, it's not just the age there. I think it's a, a timeframe. It's a relative time, a, a time and age as well.
Sure.
I mean, look at all this technology. Look how fast it is to communicate. And you know, all of us, I grew up when no felt, no cell phones, no computers. None of that existed. We had four channels and, and, and uh, watching Perry Mason and I love Lucy when I came home from school. And uh, I love me some Perry Mason.
Are you older than I think?
Maybe I'm 45, so I'll put it out there. I'm 45.
That's about what I thought. That's about what I thought.
But uh, yeah, so it, you know, the point is, is I think that our time and age, we're, we're kind of in the middle. We're in the middle of the baby boomers and we're in the middle of uh, Gen X, Gen Z.
Whatever. Yeah.
So I, I like to think of myself a little bit as a mediator. I can, I can still do calculations on a slide rule.
Yeah.
And I'm, I didn't learn on slide rule. I wanted to do that just in case the power went out. I still wanted to be able to do calculations as an engineer. But I can also, you know, hop on Excel and do massive amounts of computer programming and algorithm in, in the background to calculate whatever I want.
Interesting. Okay.
And AI, we don't even, we don't, that's a whole other subject.
Oh yeah.
But we are, I, I believe that this current admin or this, this coming up administration is going to utilize AI as much as possible.
To find some efficiencies.
We won't rely on it, but we will be using it because one of the beautiful things about AI, if you ask me is it lets you know your gaps. Because you don't know what you don't know.
For sure.
Now, of course, all of that information needs to be verified, but man, it is so nice. It is, it is very nice when somebody shows you a bunch of gaps that you can go check on. You say, oh, I never even thought about that.
Yeah.
That could be a risk for us. Let me mitigate that risk.
Okay.
And then before you know it, I think what it does, it allows us to be more prudent. It allows us to look further into the future and say, hey, what could be the possibilities here? What's the current structure of something? Does that structure need to change? Can I follow that structure? Can I go around it? What risks are associated with it? And so that's, I kind of think of things that way. 50,000 foot view and AI helps me kind of look into the future and mitigate those risks.
Yeah. Where, do you, do you have any ideas where you think y'all might use that like specifics yet, or are you kind of wait till?
Yeah, subdivision regulations.
Okay.
Um, I've used it for lots of things. Definitely economic development.
Sure.
It's very handy. Um, grant writing, grant writing is huge. If you're not, you know, if you're.
Like having it help draft?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And, and the grants can be very particular depending on what you're in. So AI can help propel you forward and in places where you've never written a grant before.
It's, it's unbelievable. Like I, I was one of the last ones to probably come around on some of this, especially like from the writing standpoint, because I'm like, I see that thing competing with me. I don't like it, right? I'll give you two quick examples. Uh, tonight we filled with this for a while before I went to chat GPT with the type of TV and was like, all right, let's figure out how this logo needs to, we needed it to be a certain way. Chat GPT, check.
There you go.
Uh, this is not a plug of it, but the book of mine that came out this year, it didn't write any of it. But what I had it do was when I was done with the book and everything was drafted, I fed the entire 400, 500 pages through AI. And I said, pick out, I just want you to pick out, pull out for me and bullet point it every time that I mentioned Birmingham news, Birmingham post, Birmingham post Herald, Kahaba hub, every single newspaper title that I had in the book. So I want you to pull it all out, pull out the headline, the date, all that. And it gave me a crazy jumpstart for my bibliography at the back of the book.
There you go. See?
Because that, I would still be trying to put that, the index, I would still be trying to put that together had I not done it that way, because it just went through, took it, I don't know, 30 seconds, a minute to go through 450 pages and pull it all out. Now I didn't just pull it out and print it, you know, it just gave me a, it, it gave me like a 70% head start on what I then needed to do formatting, you know, making sure everything going back. Okay. Was this the right date? Look it up, that kind of thing.
Well, I'll, I'll take it. I'll, let me apply it to another area in the city here.
Yes, please.
You can do interesting things like you can, you know, you asked the AI. Um, what are, what is uh, the United States perception of trustful element?
Hmm.
You ask it that question and it gives you the perception of what, what's out there in public, all the collective news, everything. And it pulls together a collective thought of what trust bill looks like. I mean, and then take that information and say, is that who we are? Is that who we want to be perceived as? And then we can kind of flex things in the city, either from our school system or economically or you know, uh, residential subdivision, whatever it is, and we can flex from there and kind of adapt to it. It just, it just kind of helps us figure out what the, what the national perception of our towns.
Interesting. So let me ask a question on that. How much does the national perception matter?
Hmm. Oh, that's a great question. I would say it matters.
I'm not saying it. I'm just curious.
Here's why.
Okay.
Because economic development, from an economic development standpoint, we need more money. We want more money. All towns want more money because you want all the things. You want all the essential services. You want all the essential services.
Yeah.
You want all the money to do all the things. The way to do that is not by taxing. You can't just keep taxing people and getting money. That's not the way to do it. The way to do it is to treat the city like a business. And you, you pull in businesses and you, you do economic bills and you do the things necessary to create money.
Okay.
Pull in money. And so the perception is, hey, trust fill is growing, trust fill is popular, our schools are fantastic.
Sure.
We have some land left. Dear foot, we're looking for these businesses. We want high tech moving in here. The perception is the investors are looking out saying, oh, oh wow, they really got their stuff together. Oh, they even have a plan. Holy cow. They're already, they're already 20% knowing their plan. Let's go up there and take a look at this place.
Right.
And then before you know it, we've created jobs.
Yeah.
We've brought in money to the city. We've increased the quality of our life here overall through essential services and non essential services.
Sure.
And then on top of that, we can use all of that and propel ourselves to deepen the, deepen the roots into the school system and tie our workforce development into our school system and have this constant feeding loop cycle where it's just raising our body of life.
Yeah.
All while preserving the charm of trustment and not overrunning it with, with high density and
Yeah.
and all the things that trustful doesn't want.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. More, more high tech business type along that way instead of more neighborhoods would be great.
Yes.
That's, that's the need right now. And it's the, probably the want right now from most people, I would think. I mean, how much land is, I mean, is Deerfoot really it? I mean, I've asked that to others.
No, that's not it. We have a little bit more.
Some more pockets somewhere.
We have more pockets and then we have, we have areas where we can um, collect some land together and possibly get larger tracts of land to do important things we want to do. Um, Deerfoot's going to take a little bit. It's hard. You, you know, there's some challenges there.
Okay.
And we have to attain, obtain some of the properties and do, do a bunch of things. Uh,
That does take a while. I mean.
We have to put a lot of things in alignment for Deerfoot to happen. And that's probably one of the reasons it's one of the last areas we haven't developed.
Sure.
Because it's a more complicated one. You can't.
The mixed ends. Yeah.
Um, but man, that's going to be, that's going to be a booming area too.
Yeah.
So I've been telling everybody, I, I have, I have told everybody if I were you, I would not move out of your house right now. I would not sell your house right now. I wouldn't move into trustful and I'd be buying as much property as you can because the plans we have for this place are remarkable. They are, they're, they're, they're not short of remarkable. They are remarkable. And if we actually execute on those, the things that we've been talking about, the new administration is going to be fantastic. And I will say this out loud too, and I'm sorry.
No, no, that's what, hey, that's what this is for. If you didn't talk, it would be a problem.
I would be remiss if I didn't say this. I am so, so grateful for the past administration and for the way things have gone on all the way through, through Melton and then through Buddy and then the city councils. And, and all of that has gotten to the place where we are. We are set up beautifully right now. I mean, from a, from a city, we're going to be, we're comfortable financially. We are, we have these gorgeous pieces of land that we have just fantastic ideas for. We have ideas to help mitigate some of our traffic. We're working with legislatures on, on a bunch of different things. So we are, it is, this place is going to be remarkable. And it's all because of the past administration where they've put us. We're not going to erase that or start over or reinvent the wheel. We're literally going to be standing on their shoulders and we're going to be building on it. They have built us a fantastic foundation. So I'm, I'm very grateful for that. They're making my job a lot easier.
Yeah. How hard are these things going to be right out the gate?
Okay, that's the other stuff. That's the other piece. So uh, I think I like this. I did construction for, I don't know, 12, 15 years, something like that.
Okay.
Remodeled a bunch of houses, a bunch of old houses too. And uh, and I've built new houses from the ground up. And I, I think of it like this, what I, what I'm starting to run into and that's gets under my skin a little bit is there are some things in place where it's like, it's like you're going to remodel one of these old 1920s houses and you want to modernize it, make it look pretty. Well, you may, it, it's easier to build a new house than it is to remodel that old house.
We're talking, are we talking specifically now about the copper project?
No, 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 we can fold into there. I'm using.
You're just, you're just, okay, you're general, in general. Okay.
As a, as a builder or as a person trying to remodel their house.
Okay.
Sometimes it can seem easier to build the new house.
Okay.
And so that's what it kind of feels like right now. It feels like the new administration's coming in. We have all these plans. We want to do all these things, but there's already stuff in place. And, and you may have to remove some plaster and some lath off the wall before, you know, you can get to the electrical to change the old knob and tube electrical.
Yeah.
Or you may have some old rust copper, corroded copper pipes you got to change out. And it's a lot harder to do that than to where if you're just building a new house, you've got, and just the sheet rocks not up yet. Just go put pipes in and cover it up. Sheet rock. Um, but no, that's actually a good second way to the copper project. Let's just jump into that.
All right. What do you want to talk about?
I would like to see it preserved as much as possible.
Me too.
I think there's a happy medium. Now, when I say preserved as much as possible, I don't mean restricting people and their private property rights. I don't mean restricting what they can do on the inside and the backside of their houses. That's not what I'm talking about here.
Yeah, no.
Uh, what I'm talking about here is preserving the his, the historic nature that, that is registered on a national level.
Since 2006, yeah.
And preserving that as much as possible if we can. And then the, here's one of my arguments. Here's why I like that. First off, it's just a cool piece of history. Why would you just, that's like going and just knocking down all the statues everywhere because you.
Yeah. Well, and it's a, and it's a massive piece of history. Like, that's what I've been trying to educate people on for years now is hey, like I, I know, sorry, but like I've said constantly, you've heard it, you've heard it in a talk at the library. I'm sure you've heard it elsewhere. It's not just historic to trustful, not just historic to Jefferson County, not just historic to Alabama. This one is unique and historic to the entire United States and we've got it right here.
Okay. Let me tie in my la, our last chunk of conversation.
Yes.
Using the analogy of the old house, let me tie that in.
Okay.
The houses that we remodeled and, and we were doing this for profit. The houses, when I was actually doing construction, houses that we remodeled, not an analogy now.
Yeah.
The new houses didn't make as much money as the houses we remodeled. Because, because there's so much charm in uniqueness in those old houses that we would preserve. We wouldn't just go in and rip everything apart. We would try to preserve it as much as possible. And then we would modernize and update the inside of the homes. We, there was more value preserved.
Yes.
We had overall more value in those homes. If we did that, rather than if we were to knock it down and.
Exactly. And you know, this is what I, you know, what I can say that our, I happened to wear the hat tonight. That wasn't on purpose. I just got a new one, so I'll wear it. Uh, but the Kaaba Homestead Heritage Foundation, when we formed in 2021, one of my first things that, that I set out to do was to do just a, uh, just a crap ton of, of research about um, preservation and not just like, hey, preserve it because it's old and I'm nostalgic, which a lot of people think that's the case, but there actually is an economic benefit to it.
Yes.
And we looked at different, I can't think of them right now. I've got a whole presentation on our website that I made that you can look and you can see the numbers all across the country. I didn't just be like, oh, this huge one in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. I was looking at Arkansas, Georgia, Alabama, New York, California, Texas, everywhere, Florida, literally everywhere. And across the board, we were looking at straight data that, that showed literally that preservation, maintaining that, that harmony, that scale. You kind of know, as a buyer, you kind of know what you're buying into. There's a, there's a steadiness about it, that kind of thing.
Yeah. I want to say that's, it started for interrupt.
No, 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 I was done.
So one of the.
I'm off my soapbox.
One of my buddies there that lived there, he, he moved there from Carrington Lakes.
Okay.
And uh, and he had lived other places in trustful, but he said, man, he goes, what, he goes, I didn't understand the, the vibe. And I don't know if he used vibe, that's a new.
I know who you're talking about, but I won't name it.
He goes, I don't, he goes, I don't think I under, I understood when I moved into the Gober project, the community filled. I can just walk out of my front door and hit that sidewalk and you've got families walking to the school. You got people exercising, people walking their dogs. And it's just this community fill that is, to me, that is the essence of trustful. That is the, that is our charm. That's our hometown, hometown community.
Right in the middle of the city. It's the heartbeat.
And we need to save that. That is a part of us. And that's one of the things I think that draws people to that area as well.
Absolutely. There, there, as you might guess, doing the book, there were so many people that I talked to that have lived there for so long that they'd be sitting on their porch because you know, it is very much a wave to your neighbor from the porch kind of area. But there would be people that come just to walk their kids. Certainly the greenway is a part of that. Don't want to leave that out. But part of that, you know, they're walking Parkway and they'd be like, hey, what, what, when were these houses built? What, what is this place? Why, why is it different? And they get to tell them the story. So you're right. It draws people in, not in like a money-making tourism kind of way, but it brings people here because it is such a draw and people want to see that and kind of be a part of that.
It's a part of that quality of life.
Absolutely.
When you have the equation that makes up quality of life, it's one variables. When you start taking out the variables, your quality of life gets lower and lower and lower. And I will say this too, since we're on camera and I don't know how many people are watching, but.
More will watch once it's posted.
I don't want trustville to settle
Hmm.
on anything.
Sure.
I want us to try to excel as much as possible on all of it. It's time. We are sitting here and it is teed up. It's all teed up right in front of us. The land is teed up. The school is teed up. The athletics are teed up. It's all teed up. The, the whole energy around this place is just really, really starting to, starting to grow. It's just, I'm very excited about it. And it's not just me. It's all the conversations I've been having with all the residents, with our legislators, with, with the outgoing administration, the new incoming administration, our department heads, all of it. Everybody, the, all the programs that are coming here, the businesses that want to move here. I mean, they are, they are chopping at the bit to get into trust. The, all the programs that are coming here, the businesses that want to move here. I mean, they are, they are chomping at the bit to get into Trustville. And we're going to have to be very selective on, on how we build this place out.
Yeah.
Um, so actually I'd like to talk about that.
Can I, can I ask you a question on it that maybe you'll get into? And it's just something that I hear, you know, when you read, by God, if you read on Facebook or something, but I try not to. But when businesses or industry company, when they're chomping at the bit to come in, the, I forget what it's called, but like the, the tax abatement is always called, that kind of stuff.
Tax incentives.
Tax incentives. How, how is that balance? Like, I guess, I guess to the common, like, I mean, I'd be one of them because I'm truly asking because I don't understand it. I'm not in that world. If someone is, to use your phrase, chomping at the bit to come in, why incentivize them and the city miss out on, on some money if they do want to be here?
That's a complicated answer too. And I'm not going to get into all the details because we.
There's some things you can't do.
You have to treat it on a case-by-case basis. You have to look at your land use, your area, what you're trying to build up in the area. Um, is one of the areas in your town rundown or you're trying to build that up more? And you know, that might call for incentivization there. Everything should always have a sunset clause on it. Never just be like, oh, you can have taxes here for free for thirty years. That's.
That's crazy. Yeah.
So, uh, you know, it's going to be a case-by-case basis. It also matters on what type of business is coming in. Is it a gigantic corporation to where they're going to be bringing in huge sums of sales tax revenue? Would they move here anyway if we didn't do that? Those are also questions that need to be considered for sure. And then not only that, you don't just give tax abatements to anybody.
Right.
In any business, oh, we want to come in, give us tax bait. Of course, they're all going to ask for it. Why wouldn't you go to your parents and ask for extra allowance, you know?
For sure.
And the, the only way, the only way or one of the, I guess the criteria, you've got to go down a checklist for me to meet the criteria to get a tax abatement. One of those, it has to be a community benefit. If it's not a community benefit from the exterior of the building or anything like that, you're, to me, you're not going to tax base. Like you can't just be a company moving in here and say, hey, I want a, a newer kitchen in here, a nicer kitchen. Will you give us a tax abatement? Cause everybody likes a restaurant.
Yeah.
Well, no, but I'll tell you what, how about if you, this is a rundown area or this parking lot, this, this property that you're buying is rundown. We don't have any city lighting over here. There's no good parking. All the parking is, you know, growing up with weeds and all that. If you, you know, maybe we redo your parking lot for you.
Yeah.
And add some lighting in instead of giving you an abatement. So there's other things we can trade. We can do public, private partnerships. Right. Certain things other than just giving away money too. So the point is, I think that all the businesses that move in here, we want to partner with them.
Sure.
This, we are not just a town and they're not just a money driving thing. We are, that what we're trying to grow is a community with a high quality of life. And in order to do that, the businesses that have ridden in here, we want to make sure they want to be here for the right reasons. And that we're all going to benefit as a community. And that's mutual benefit. The more we benefit, the more they're.
Absolutely. Um, you know, we've got Christie Bradford from Leadership Trustful. She's here. So let's, let's try to wrap this thing up if, if we can.
Yeah.
We're, we're not limited on, hey, we'll, we'll do, I'm sure we'll do more podcasts along the way these next four years. I'm so much fun. It's, I, I have so much fun doing it, uh, even with my little setup, but, uh, we'll, so we'll get Christie in here in just, uh, one minute and she can come in. Uh, so I'm going to ask you the most pressing question before y'all are sworn in. Where do you, where are you being for Halloween this Friday?
Oh gosh. Uh, actually not, not a lot of people know this about me, but I grew up rock climbing and rappelling. It's one of my hobbies and.
I could see that for you.
My kid, I'm going to be here. I'm taking my kids camping and I'm going to teach them how to ride a climb outdoors.
Fun.
Yeah. It's going to be fun.
It's fun.
And I'm, I'm going to have to stretch a little more than I used to. Maybe do some jumping jacks, warm these muscles and tendons up so I don't hurt myself.
That's going to be so much fun though.
I'm very excited about it.
Yeah. Y'all might freeze.
Oh, it's going to be cold and I can't wait.
Yeah.
It teaches them character.
Yes.
It teaches them. Matter of fact, I, they, uh, and I'll, I'll, we should end with this.
All right.
My kids, when they go camping with me, I do not light the campfire for them. I tell them they cannot figure it unless they light the campfire.
Oh man, you're like, you're like probed on Survivor, like when they go to like.
And you know what I, you know what I give them?
What?
A magnesium stick.
Nice.
So my kids will, when we go camping, we go to an outdoor or backyard fire pit or something like that.
Yeah.
I say Harper, you know, go build the fire, magnesium sticks downstairs and she'll say, okay dad.
That's awesome.
She goes down and I come out and then she'll.
Little bit of self-reliance.
She'll spark it, blow the flame, blow the tinder, put it under the fire and then boom, we're, we're sitting by the fire.
That's beautiful. Awesome.
We're going to teach these kids character.
I love it. I love it. We need more of it. Well, I appreciate you doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here and, uh, we'll do more of this over the next four years and probably beyond. So, uh, thank you Ben Horton for, for joining. We're going to keep this live on. Christie's going to come in and y'all are going to swap off.
And thank you to the sponsors.
Yes.
Appreciate y'all doing this.
Yes, thank you.
Keep sponsoring him so we can keep coming back.
Oh dang, keep going. Keep going. Yes. Sponsors, listen to Council-elect Ben Horton, please. We need it. All right. Well, thank you. So you can go around, Christie will come in, watch behind you and I'll, I'll read off these sponsors while, while y'all switch. Thank you, Ben. Really appreciate you. All right. While Christie comes in, uh, tell you again, real quick. Uh, sponsors of the writer's block live are three sixty lending. Appreciate Lisa McClellan of three sixty lending sponsoring the podcast. She's been in Trustville more than twenty years. Opened three sixty lending in two thousand and twenty-two, uh, navigating paths to homeownership. Visit my three sixty lending dot com. And also the Mark Turner Law Firm, Mark Turney Attorney at Law. Visit markturnerlawfirm.com or call two zero five five six eight seven zero zero three. And Christie Bradford is in the building. Hello, come on in. How are you?
I'm great. How are you doing?
Here, I'm good. Let me, let me, let me get this off because you are not Ben Horton there. You are Leadership Trustful Executive Director, Christie Bradford.
Yes.
All right. There we go. We're going, we're good to go. So how are things going with Leadership Trustful?
Great. We've got our newest class going and they had their first class day, uh, in October. We had an opening retreat in September and we had our first class day in October. You were part of that class day.
Yeah, I took most of the work day off that day.
Yes. So you, you helped us out. They learned a lot from you, Gary.
We hope, we hope. I hope so. I had fun doing it.
It was. It was a very good day and you did a great job.
Well, thank you.
You told them about the history of Trustful, your love.
Yeah.
Um, you met us at the historical museum. Jane Alexander couldn't be there.
Yeah.
And you met us there and, and, um, told them a little bit about the museum and how it came to be. And then you met us at the pavilion.
Across the street, you know, an hour later.
So you were playing a dual role because you represented the Kahava Heritage Foundation too.
Oh yeah. 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 How was, so this is class four?
Class four. Yes.
That happened quick. It seemed like it happened quick. So how did, just kind of give an overview of Leadership Trustful for us? Like when it was created, why, how you came into the, the leadership role of the group? Just take me through that story. I don't know that I know it.
You may not. Um, well, you know, I'm part of the Trustful Daybreak Rotary Club.
Yep.
And, uh, it was back in the fall of two thousand and twenty-one and Mayor Choate came to speak to us. He always comes and speaks to our Rotary Club and gives us kind of a, a what's going on in the city, um, presentation, which is great. And at the end, he mentioned something about, he wanted to start a leadership trustful. And at that time I was working in downtown Birmingham for a nonprofit. And, uh, and I was very familiar with some of the other leadership programs around our metro area. There's Leadership Birmingham and Leadership Vestavia, Leadership Hoover. And so when Mayor Choate said that, it just, I was so excited because I, I knew how powerful those programs could be for a city.
Sure.
So I went up to him afterwards and I, I said, you know what? If you want to start something like that, I would love to help because that just makes me excited.
Yeah.
And so, um, so he, he called me, uh, probably two months later and he said, hey, we're ready to start. We want to seat a board and, um, if you're still interested, you know, would you like to serve on the board? And so I was very honored and, and of course said yes. And so, um, Mike Guinness was our, um, our first board president and, and he was just awesome. And, uh, the rest of the people on the board were great. And so we started building this thing, this, this program and we modeled it after Leadership Hoover. So we had a consultant come to Trustville and help advise us on.
Sure.
On how they started their program and, um, and it was very good to have a model like that.
Yeah.
And, um, so that helped us get started the first year. Well, um, the girl, the consultant that we hired from Hoover, you know, once we got rolling, she got a job in Athens, Alabama, and she moved. And so, so the board kind of kept it rolling. And, and I told the mayor, I said, you know what? I'm an executive director at a nonprofit in downtown Birmingham. I, I think I know how to run this. If you ever want to, you know, an executive director, I can do this. And so, um, the board talked about it, of course, without me there and voted on it. And, um, next thing you know, I'm the executive director and I was thrilled because, um, I, I was so happy to get back to Trustful again.
I bet.
Yes.
I bet. Knew the job you wanted and went and got it. I didn't know that's how it came about.
That's how it came about.
That's awesome. Okay.
And it's, it's just been great ever since. And.
Yeah.
We have an active board and, um, lots of good people that come through Leadership Trustful and get to interact with good people in the community like you. And, and it's just been an amazing experience.
Yeah. How did y'all come up with like, like first, I guess, when a class starts, how long does it go? And how do y'all fill those months? Like, how did y'all come up with everything that y'all do?
Yeah. So like I said, we modeled it after Leadership Hoover, but we had to customize it because this was Leadership Trustful.
Yeah.
And so, um, each, we go through nine months of the year. We have a, what we call a class day. Uh, but believe me, we're not sitting in a classroom. It's, uh, it's an immersive experience. Um, because this is all about taking people who are already leaders in their own right and connecting them with each other and connecting them with our city and connecting them with, with people in our city who are leaders.
Yeah.
And so we make it immersive. We want them to experience different, different sectors of the city. So one month, uh, we'll have public safety day.
Yeah.
And they get to go behind the scenes and they get to see what makes up our police department and our fire department. And it, it is so cool. And then we'll have government day. And on that day, they get to interact with government officials from our city, but also from the county, from the state. We even have, uh, federal representatives, um, there.
Yeah.
And so they get to be up close and personal with those kinds of people and, uh, talk to them and have conversations with them. And, and really, you know, dig in deep, um, and get some knowledge that they want to have. But they get to interact with leaders in these other sectors of our city. And on government day, our county, our state, and even federal. Um, and the hope is that we are building a passion about Trustful.
Sure.
Um, because the goal is that they get to see Trustful from a, a whole new lens than what they've seen it before. Because if you're sitting on the ballpark benches and you're talking to other people, you've got one view of Trustful.
Yeah.
But if you're going behind the scenes and talking to education leaders and city leaders and business leaders, you get a whole different aspect of Trustful. And so, um, we want to develop a, a passion for Trustful. These people already have, uh, the goods. They're already leaders. They already know what to do. And we just want them to become excited about our city and to bring their skills up to our city. And so when they finish Leadership Trustful, they end up becoming involved in boards and city committees. And, uh, some of them take leadership positions in maybe their churches or maybe civic organizations that they hadn't thought to approach before. Or maybe they didn't even know we had some of these things in trust.
That's what I think I've heard the most. Maybe not this last class as much, but like certainly the first two, the, the thing that I heard the most after the fact or, or during, uh, during while they were in class was that they didn't realize how much happened. You know, like how, how many boards, committees, groups, you know, all the things that public safety has to do, all the things that public works, uh, a lot of them didn't know we had a museum. Now they do. Uh, you know, so it's like, there's all these things that like you said, it's immersive.
Yes.
And I think that's probably the best word to describe this thing is how immersive it is. Like they touched everything.
Yes. And then once they touch all those things for nine months and it gets to experience them.
Yeah.
I think what gives them a whole new lens is they get to see how it's all interconnected.
Yeah.
And how all of those things connecting together makes this such a special place.
Sure.
And I know in the beginning I mentioned that there's Leadership Birmingham, there's Leadership Hoover, Leadership Vestavia. Trustful is a much smaller city than those other cities, you know?
Sure.
So I think it's pretty, pretty impressive that, that we have a thriving leadership program in our city of about twenty-eight thousand people.
Yeah.
So it's great.
Yeah. What have you enjoyed the most about leading the group? What's been, what's been the best, the best thing about it?
Think of course the people, uh, that's what it's all about. But to me, I think the most exciting part is seeing the transformation of people as they go through our program.
Yeah.
Um, you know, when they first start Leadership Trustful, um, they're curious and they're not really sure what they've gotten into exactly. They know it's good and they're excited to be there, but they're not really sure what's going on. I kind of tell people, Leadership Trustful to me is like the Grand Canyon, you know, until you go see it, you really don't, you know, you can see the pictures, you can hear about it, you know, it's great. But once you get there and you're standing on the rim of that canyon, you're like, ah, this is what it is, you know?
Yeah.
Leadership Trustful is like that. But, but so they come in curious and unsure a little bit. A lot of them may not know each other. And then to see it transform and by graduation, um, they become connected to each other. They become connected to the city. They become connected to people that are running the city and in the city and influential in the city. And they come out these confident, uh, people with a passion for Trustful.
Yeah.
And they want some action. They want to do something, uh, because they've learned all of these things about Trustful. And to me, that's a driving force to move your city forward.
Sure. Well, I mean, like, I mean, how, how many people on this new city council have been through it? I mean, it's like.
Yes.
Almost everybody. Like, I mean, it's, you, you can tell that like some of these people that maybe haven't, maybe they've served in some ways, served the city, but it's, it, to me, it seemed like it maybe helped them in a way, make that leap to try something, not bigger, but you know, like, hey, I'm going to take what I learned and I'm going to run for city council.
Yeah.
Run for mayor, run, you know, whatever. So it does seem like it's really having an effect.
Yes. And that's exactly the outcome we want. We want people to become involved. We want people to make, want to make Trustful a better place than what it already is.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, that was exciting to me to see the people that were running this time and to see how many had been through Leadership Trustful. So, um, yeah, that's the outcome we want. People that, that develop that passion and want to become involved. Some of them come into it knowing that they want to serve the city or do things in the city. But others come in and they don't realize that. But when they come out, then they realize, hey, I want to be a part of making decisions and, and doing, and bringing things into our community.
What's something for you, like, like I mentioned a bit ago, um, you know, people be like, oh, I didn't know we had this or I didn't know this was there, that kind of thing. Since you've been doing this since two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two-ish, whenever it was exactly, um, what's something you've learned about the city that you didn't know?
I guess.
Now you're, now you're married to Chuck Bradford, so you know a lot.
Yes, that's right. I can just ask him. Um, but I think the most surprising thing to me was the industrial park. I knew it was there and you know, um, I'm a retired teacher and I used to teach at Payne's. So I would go down every day and I knew where the entrance to the industrial park was.
Yeah.
And you could see a few things on eleven, but I did not know how deep it, it runs.
Yeah.
And then to know what businesses are actually in our industrial park and that their products go all over the world and all over the United States. It's absolutely amazing.
That's interesting. That is interesting. Yeah. Cause people don't know how deep that goes. I think that, what is it? Is it Commerce Lane? Is that the road that they'll cut through that opened a few years ago? I mean, we use it, we're in Stockton, so we use it religiously now. And I think that has opened some eyes too, just to be like, now you've got, it's like, you might be using it as a cut through in a way, but like, you're like, I didn't know that was there. I didn't know that was there. That road goes further back that way. Like it's just, it's, it's bigger than you think.
It is bigger than you think. Yes.
With still more room to potentially add some, some more light industry and stuff like that in the future. So.
And there's a map of the industrial park that you can look at. It's on the city website and I don't, I don't know if it's been updated or not, but, um, but anyway, gives you a good bird's eye view of just how big that thing is and how many businesses are out there.
Yeah.
So that was very eye-opening to me.
I'm not sure if, how you can answer this or if you can. So if you can't, just.
Okay.
Just tell me I can't answer that. But like, how do people, if they want, like obviously class four is going on right now. If someone wants to. If someone wants to be a part of class five, how does that process work?
Well, I can answer that question for sure.
I didn't, I didn't know if it was like the masters and it was like a special invitation or if there's like an application process.
Well, there's not a special invitation, but there is a special time of the year.
Time of the year. Okay.
So June is, well, all you need to know, June. And if you go to the Leadership Trustful website, which is just leadershiptrustful.org, uh, in June, for the whole month of June, our application is online. And anybody can apply for it. And, um, and then in July, our board looks at all those applications and the board makes the selection. And it's not a popularity contest and it's, it's not really, we don't seat a class kind of the way you would think that we would. Uh, we're trying to build layers of diversity when we seat a class.
Sure.
So we want people from many different businesses.
Yeah. Well, you've, you've seen that in these four classes for sure. Yeah.
We want people with many different skill sets. Um, and of course, you know, race and gender and age. Like, um, I've been so excited because every single class, we've had a very, uh, broad spectrum of age.
Wide net.
It has. Because our youngest, um, participant this year is in their twenties. Our oldest is in their seventies.
Oh wow.
And so those, those people bring, when you have a wide age gap like that, they bring different perspectives when they talk to each other about things and about what they've seen and about our community.
Absolutely.
Another part of Leadership Trustful, um, and I don't know if that's one of your questions. Is that as part of Leadership Trustful, they work on a project. So we put them in groups. Each class is divided into groups and those groups work on projects. And they get to select what the community project is that they'll work on. And it's usually something tangible that will improve or benefit Trustful in some way and that will be sustainable. So they, they leave something behind uh, after they go through Leadership Trustful.
What are some of the, what are some of the projects that, that, that stand out that maybe, maybe someone that hasn't gone through Leadership Trustful or doesn't really even know about Leadership Trustful, but like, they might just be in the community and notice something and not realize that Leadership Trustful had a hand in it.
Yeah. One of the projects last year that I thought was, um, a little bit unusual and unique and very interesting to me was, um, we had this one group and they bonded over a love of the Kahaba River.
Okay.
And so they decided to make a project that had something to do with the Kahaba River. And what they arrived at is they wanted to develop an education program. So more people would learn about the, the inner workings of the Kahaba River and the ecosystem. And that group, um, ended up reaching out and to the nature conservancy. They reached out to the Friends of Pinchcock Creek. They ended up writing, helping the nature conservancy write a grant. Um, to be able to do some things with the Kahaba River. And then they connected the, um, some resources in the library with the Kahaba River. So there's a QR code. Uh, I'm not sure where they have it, but the people at the library would know. And you can scan this QR code and it takes you to resources in the library that are about the Kahaba River. And so this past summer, they actually had education classes in the river behind the library. Some, a turtle class, I know was one of them, uh, where they learned about, uh, turtles in the Kahaba River. So I thought that was really.
That's interesting.
Yeah, a great project. It's not something you would see when you're walking by, but we all know the Kahaba River and what's where it is behind the library. But just to know that, that, that you can, hey, go into the library and find out, hey, what classes are y'all going to have about the Kahaba River, uh, this year? And, and can I bring my kids and what can we do? So I thought that was, that was really, uh, great thinking on their part.
That is. That's cool. I, I didn't know about that. See, like I'm asking a question, you know, I try to ask questions that I kind of know the answers to, but you know, didn't know that one.
And another, another one that you can see that I just thought of, and that's from last year too. And I guess because those are fresh on my mind.
Sure.
Um, but one group decided they were, they were passionate about the dog park.
Yeah.
And so they were looking at the dog park and they thought, you know, we just have plastic chairs out here and they're cracked and weathered and you know, just, we need to make this more aesthetically pleasing and we would like to tie in, maybe get some of those black uh, kind of trash cans that tie in that are nice in other parks along the greenway and things. They said, you know, we need things like that in the dog park. And so they were able to raise some money. And they also wanted nicer benches and to get rid of those cracked plastic chairs.
Right.
Well, it turns out, I mean, they were talking to people, um, with the city and Parks and Recreation. And it turns out that there were some of those benches in storage.
Oh, how about that?
They were able to get those out and put them at the dog park. They've got the nice garbage cans.
Yeah.
Um, they're eventually, they still want to work on this because they're still passionate about it. They want to lay some paper, pavers in the dog park and put a pergola. But, uh, if you go by the dog park, it looks really nice because of the work that they've done.
How about that?
Yeah.
All, all that stuff benefits the city. That's cool. That's cool. I'm, I'm glad y'all have it. And, uh, so we'll, we'll wrap this up. So you already mentioned, so people, if they, if they do come June, uh, all the things they would need are at leadershiptrustful.org.
That's right.
Y'all can, well, y'all, I know y'all are on Facebook because I tagged y'all and stuff.
Yes.
You're probably everywhere. LinkedIn.
Yes.
Instagram. Are you, you managing all the things?
Yes. I'm the only employee.
It takes a lot, doesn't it? I understand. I understand.
It does.
It takes a lot.
Yes. And, and when you go to our website, if you're looking for our application, I'm trying to make that easy. You go to the website, it's in the top right corner. It says class application. You click on it. It's an electronic application. You fill it out online. Yeah. Beautiful. And, and on the website, there's our, my email address and phone number. And so if anybody ever needs help or has questions, they can reach out to me. I'll be happy to help them.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Well, I appreciate you being here. We're, we're going to wrap this thing up and, uh, y'all make sure you check that out. Uh, check out leadershiptrustful.org. Uh, we'll see what this class four comes up with.
Yeah.
Uh, this time, uh, tell y'all one more time before we wrap this thing up. Uh, just that I appreciate our, our sponsors for these live shows, uh, three sixty lending, Lisa McClellan. Um, appreciate her navigating paths to homeownership. Make sure you visit my three sixty lending dot com. And also Mark Turner with the Mark Turner Law Firm. Uh, make sure you visit markturnerlawfirm.com or call two zero five five six eight seven zero zero three. Uh, we're going to end this live stream, uh, right now. But appreciate city council-elect Ben Horton being here tonight. Certainly appreciate Christie Bradford from Leadership Trustful being here. Uh, you guys stay tuned to my, uh, social media. We've got a few more of these live shows coming up next week that you won't want to miss. Uh, Jamie Melton Anderson, uh, is scheduled to be live one day next week. You, you'll find all this on my socia's, all the things. But Jamie Melton Anderson, uh, Perry Cook is going to come on and talk about his years of service to the Trustful City Council. And then now, uh, by the time we do this live, uh, it will be with Mayor Ben Short. So we will have Mayor Ben Short on here talking about, oh my God, everything, talking about everything. So, uh, appreciate you guys tuning in. Uh, please share this. Tell your friends about it. Tell some sponsors about it. You know, just talk about this thing. So, uh, thank you guys and good night.